Welcome, this is the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November tenth. I'm the Chair, Sean Flowerday. With me is Commissioner and Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioner Deb Shore, Commissioner Roma Amson, and Commissioner Krista Yocum. So, please rise and join me for the martial regents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
Copying the rest of open meetings act is located on Walt, at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.na.gov. Agenda item one or minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims. Approval of all claims processed through November tenth, two thousand and twenty, and this needs to be amended to include payroll ending on November fourth.
I will move approval with the notation to include the payroll. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one. With a single vote of the Board of Commissioners, these items are approval of. Utility prevent number twenty forty-three align wind stream to install a new fiber communication line to a cellular tower located at seventeen one-one-eight North Fourteenth Street, Davie, Nebraska, and no cost to the county. Amendments to the following county contracts, C dash twenty dash six fifty-three with Capital City Horse and Pony Club for the right-of-way on North Fourteenth Street and West Waverly Road. C dash seventeen dash eight fifty-eight with Vulcan signs for annual supply traffic sign cases. C dash seventeen dash eight sixty with Page Freezer Software, Inc. for Lancaster County's social media archive services. Amendments to the phone line county contracts for annual supply asphaltic concrete. This includes C dash nineteen dash eight forty-six with Catherine Sons Construction, Inc. And C dash nineteen dash eight forty-seven with Pavers, Inc. Amendment to county con- amendment number one to county contract C dash ten dash eight with District Energy Corporation. To clarify, the DEC shall provide standby backup electrical generation to county adult detention, to the county adult detention facility. Authorize a chair to sign IRS Form eight zero three eight in conjunction with the issuance of revenue bonds for East, for the Eastmont Living project. Change order number one to county contract C dash twenty dash two fifty-seven with Midwest Infrastructure to add an item due to plan omission. Right-of-way contract with Larry H. and Paul H., Paul E. Spawn, North Fourteenth Street and Bluff Road in the amount of three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Received and placed on file of the phone line reports for October two thousand and twenty. Clerk of District Court and Assessor Register Deeds.
I would move approval of the consent items.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is new business. For A is a resolution authorizing Sean Flowerday, the county board chairperson of Lancaster County, to sign the twenty twenty year-end certification of county highway superintendent form.
I move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a resolution in matter of authorizing a county board chair or vice chair to sign the engineering agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Pam Dingman, County Engineer. This is the agreement for the paving project on ninety-eighth Street between Old Cheney and A. There's actually a base, like a program agreement, and then there's another three agreements on each of these federally funded projects that we've been bringing to you. So, we're a little rich in agreements, and I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware what was going on with all these.
Clerk? Any questions? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four C is a resolution in matter of authorizing the county board or chair or vice chair to sign an agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for supplemental number one program agreement to allow federal aid funding participation for environmental services.
I would move approval.
No, go ahead.
Did we just read the same agenda item, or am I maybe off today? Okay, so this is the agreement for ninety-eighth Street from Old Cheney to A, and this is the part that we will be designing in-house. And so, NDOT and the Federal Highway Administration will be reimbursing our department for our engineering services.
Good, I will move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a preliminary engineering agreement to county contract C dash nineteen dash six forty with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for Lancaster County to perform preliminary engineering services. The total agreement amount is eighty-three thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents, of which sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents is a federal share, and sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-two cents is the LPA's share.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. As stated in, in this item, this is actually breaking down the share that will be reimbursed to Lancaster County and the share that we will put, we will put towards the labor, which we are tracking on the new payroll system.
I move approval.
I added that just for sport.
For extra points here.
Second. And it's really exciting to see this work, this work beginning. It really is. And I'm sure that the people on, along ninety-eighth Street are going to be very excited also.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four E is a program agreement supplemental number one with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for federal reimbursement. Sotilla Road, Twenty-seventh Street to Sixty-eighth Street. The county and the state agree that twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents and additional preliminary costs will be, will be paid utilizing federal funds of ninety percent federal and ten percent local match.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, this is the, the portion of the public information meeting that has been reprogrammed to kick that off again. I'd really hope to be able to have this meeting prior to Thanksgiving because we really don't like to have public meetings in between Thanksgiving and New Year's. However, this agreement lagged a little bit with all the different things that needed to go through in order to get its ninety percent federal funding. So, we will kick off that public information meeting after the first of the year.
I move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is a recommendation from the purchasing agent to rescind county contract C dash twenty dash six eighty-seven awarded to Gana Construction for supplying and hauling gravel surface course material for Lancaster County in the amount of five-hundred-nine-thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Morning, Bob Waller, County Purchasing Agent. So, this item and the one that's up next is a response to a protest we received for the bid for gravel about two lines. And so, what we are doing in order to get all the rest of the lines delivered is to rescind the original order to Gana, and then the next lot, the next item on the agenda is to award the remaining items to Gana. And then, we will go through the remainder of the protest policy and play that out as it's listed in policy.
I would move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I guess I would just ask to clarify, Bob, these two items, item F takes out the current contract. Item G restores a big portion of it, but not all of it.
Correct. The protest was specifically for two line items. So, we awarded the remainder of it in order for that delivery to begin as soon as possible.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and county engineer to order a contract to gain a construction for supplying and hauling gravel surface course material for Lancaster County in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is a participant agreement with the city of Lincoln, a new American economy research fund, and welcoming America for the Gateways for Growth Challenge Round Four. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would like to just share a little bit about this. This is part of the, some of the work being done with the New Americans Task Force and in, alongside the city. And so, this is a technical assistance grant. It gives us a membership, it'd be a shared membership between these organizations, to welcoming America, which gives us access to technical assistance. Further, New American Economy will do some further data searching here that'll layer on to the, the survey of, of individuals that already been done by the New American Task Force. It gives us a really good picture of who's living here, what those economic contributions are, what their purchase power of homes, et cetera, are. It'll just give us a really good picture of what's going on here and add on to some of the other work that we're doing. So, this is pretty exciting and, and no cost, which is really good. It puts us into a cohort with other communities doing similarly. Last year, they awarded fourteen. I don't know how many for sure this year. It is extremely competitive. I think last year, they had like fifty applicants for those fourteen spots. I don't know this year. And there was, oh, so there will be a public announcement that, that Gateways for Growth will be putting out, and that'll come out mid, I think mid-month that will want to echo probably. So, it's pretty exciting to me.
The no, the no-cost part is exciting.
Definitely.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Add a motion and a second.
Please call the roll then.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four I are recommendations from the Personnel Policy Board to amend the following personnel rules. Eighteen dash one, compensation for absence on holidays. Eighteen dash three, compensation for work performed on the holidays. Nineteen point three, sick leave, and nineteen point four, injury leave.
Good morning, Kristy Bauer, Deputy County Attorney. Doug McDaniel was unable to be with you this morning, so I'm here in his absence. These are the rule amendments that we've been discussing with the board on staff meetings to get all the departments standardized with the new Oracle system. So, those are what you see before you today. The Personnel Policy Board did recommend approval of those rule amendments. I would note that Doug had received some concern from one county department on eighteen point one, the compensation for absence on holidays. Normally, the effective date of these rule amendments is when you approve them. However, if we approve them today, it's mid-pay period and we have a holiday tomorrow. And so, the department was concerned that we hadn't provided our unrepresented employees adequate notice. So, HR's recommendation would be for on item one, compensation for absence on holidays, that that change is effective December third, which is the first day of the first pay period in December.
Question, why wouldn't that logic also be the same for eighteen point three?
Eighteen point three says that if there are any hours worked on the holidays, that those are counted as productive hours. So, we have to count those as productive hours with regard to the FLSA. So, that is actually, in the event that there's some departments that aren't doing that, we need to change that to be in compliance immediately. So, that would benefit the employees. The rule in eighteen point three is going to benefit those employees that it may not have been considered hours worked in the past. Remember, eighteen point one is just that eight hours of holiday pay, whether or not that counts as productive time. And eighteen point three is actually hours worked on a holiday that should be considered productive time per the FLSA.
Okay, so, let me ask the question again. Would it be beneficial to have that go into effect also on December third?
No, because right now, the system Oracle is set up that it, it's hours worked, so it's already counting towards overtime. So, Oracle, we don't need to do any change orders with eighteen point three because Oracle is already set up to track those hours worked as productive time. With the other ones, that there, there will have to be some changing in Oracle that we also thought may take a few weeks.
Okay. So, do you want a motion then to approve all four items with the amendment that eighteen point one becomes effective December third?
If, if the board wants to accept that recommendation from HR, yes, we would appreciate that.
I will make that a motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
There might be.
I also spoke with that county department head, and I think this alleviates their fears.
Very good.
So, I think that's right. So... Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Amson?
Yes.
Yocum? Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is a recommendation from the Personnel Policy Board to create the telework human resources policy bulletin.
I can speak to this item too, and Mr. Durbin may want to speak to it also. We had put this telework agreement, excuse me, bulletin together somewhat at the direction of the board as we were looking at telework during the pandemic. It should be noted that this bulletin does not come into play until after our current bulletin on telework for the pandemic expires. I anticipate that that may be extended beyond December thirty-first, depending on what the feds do with the FFCRA, which is the Families First Response Coronavirus Act. As you'll recall, that gave our employees the eighty hours of emergency paid sick leave, so that may be extended. So, this telework bulletin would really come into play once that has expired. And all this really does is set a framework for departments that if they want to offer telework to certain positions in their departments, that they can do so. And it also sets forth the minimum of what that telework policy and any agreement with the employee should look like if they decide to telework.
I will move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is a memorandum of understanding between the Fifty-Fifth Wing Office of Air Force Base and Lancaster County, Nebraska, on behalf of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. This is, we have had a longstanding agreement with the, with the airbase, with the National Guard. This specifically has to do with security for the aircraft and any kind of contingencies when they move their aircraft down to Lincoln because they're doing air runway repair and stuff in Omaha. So, this is just an agreement between us. Should they need our assistance, we're available.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four L is Nebraska Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office selective overtime enforcement mini-grant contract application award for the Lancaster, Lancaster County Sheriff's Office for participation in the National Clicker Ticket Mobilization from November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, through November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Good morning, Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. This is an annual traffic safety initiative that we've entered into with the Office of Highway Safety through the Department of Transportation. This would be a clicker ticket campaign they run every November Thanksgiving timeframe. We'll probably do a traffic safety checkpoint at some point during this, that period of time. The overtime for that is paid for by the Office of Highway Safety.
Move approval.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M is an interlocal agreement with the city of Lincoln to establish and operate the safety training op, option program for minor traffic violations in the county.
Good morning, Bruce Prenda, Chief Deputy Lancaster County Attorney. This is the item that we discussed last week. It's a partnership between the city attorney and the county attorney for use of the stop program fees. It has a provision, a newer provision that allows for the support of public schools and county high schools and their driver safety program. The city council is also, either has approved or will approve this particular interlocal agreement. We'd ask for your approval.
I move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four N is a letter directing the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department to man section thirteen dash zero four eight of the nineteen-seventy-nine zoning resolution of Lancaster County.
So, I asked our chief administrative officer to draft this letter. I, it, this is kind of all about, really, this is a year and a half incoming. When we did the wind regulations at the beginning of twenty nineteen, I said then that I was, you know, I was happy to vote, vote for the compromise that we had at the time, but if we didn't see some kind of wind development in Lancaster County, I would want to take another stab at it. I think we're still searching for that balancing point between a protection of quality of life of residents around the area, but still viable wind development. I think the, the letter says, says it best with the line, "Since those text amendments were adopted in twenty nineteen, it has become apparent that the resolution failed to strike the appropriate, inappropriate balance that would allow a viable path toward wind energy development." So, yeah, I would like to direct planning. I've, I've already, you know, submitted some suggestions to planning. I'd be happy to show anybody those. Basically, I'm, I would like to, it's basically changing two numbers and striking one paragraph. I'm happy to go over that, that with anyone who has any questions on it, but I think this is me kind of officially kicking off that process, and I hope the rest of the board will join me in that.
Yeah. No, I think that's well said. We, our intent from the beginning was to find balance. It was never balance. It was never to eliminate wind energy from, at least I will say my intent, that would be more accurate, was never to eliminate wind, the option for wind energy in Lancaster County. So we're looking for that balance.
I think this is hugely important as the population grows in the city and the county, is truly striking that balance of preserving that quality of life and moving industry forward.
Still gives us the option on down the road for constituents to voice their concerns, not only at the Planning Commission hearing, but to this board as we take final action on any changes that might be proposed. In supporting this, I still will withhold any future options for decision-making on site specific.
Absolutely. Very good.
I would move approval.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I just want to add a thank you to both the county attorney staff and the planning department staff. I know that this is a lot of work, and they've already put in a lot of hours on that, and I'm perfectly aware of what I'm doing to them. So sorry and thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is an agreement with Segal Marco Advisors to provide consulting services regarding the annual investment and administrative review of the county's 401A retirement plan and a 457B deferred compensation program. The agreement is from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021.
As the board is aware, we, we hire Segal Marco to provide, to provide dollars for the year is paid out of the plan, the plan fees, and the price has stayed steady since 2019. So this will be the 2021, 2021 agreement.
I will move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest? Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is 4P. This is our amendment to the following administrative services agreements between Lancaster County and Prudential Retirement Insurance and Annuity Company. The amendment provides substitutions for Exhibit M, performance standards, and Exhibit C, subsection 5, enrollment and communication service. This is C-8-663 with Nebraska County, Nebraska Employee Retirement Plan, and C-8-664 Lancaster County, Nebraska, 457 Deferred Compensation Plan.
Prudential brought these to our attention while they were doing an audit of their own performance regarding the plan. They had found that they had failed to meet a few performance standards, and while they were going through that, they realized that these performance standards were out of date regarding what they normally would have. It's not so much, there really aren't too many substantive changes across these performance standards. They're really just updating some of the language. For example, one of these contains a performance standard that we wouldn't even really want. It requires hundreds of group sessions for employees onsite. That's really not something that we even want or would be feasible here, but obviously they failed to meet that. The other requirement is that their, their education representative, who is Crystal, who everyone's familiar with, would be residing in Lancaster County, which is not the case. She doesn't reside in Lancaster County. Nevertheless, she still provides available benefit and still is able to meet all those other performance standards. So what they will do for failing to meet some of these performance standards is pay into the plan a penalty of $2,750. And then in consideration of that, we have agreed, if the board, if the board approves these changes, to update our performance standards going forward.
Just one, one question or comment, and I, to be honest, did not read through these in detail. But going back to our customer service consultant residing in Lancaster County, could it be something residing in Nebraska? And I know this probably came about as we had one representative who was located way out of state. I don't remember, Chicago or Kansas City, Denver, and, you know, came here maybe once a month. And it was challenging for employees.
Well, I will say that they have a requirement to provide an onsite retirement counselor, and they still have all these performances, performance standards. So I don't think that we would be in that same situation, even if this person were not here. But I think they're committed to that. If we were to see some change, I think we would want to talk to Prudential going forward. And I also say that Prudential's been an excellent partner throughout all of this. They actually brought these to our attention. This wasn't us complaining about our service levels. This was them doing a good faith audit of their own performance.
And to be clear, this was prior to Prudential time. So this was with a different provider.
Prudential has been pretty, pretty great to work with.
I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Here is a contract with Far America for annual supply pharmacy-related services Lancaster County. The contract shall be a four-year term with the option to renew for one additional four-year term. The cost to county is not to exceed $100,000.
Move approval.
Second.
We have. Okay. Bob Wallach, County Purchasing Agent. I just wanted to point out that this is the second vendor for this contract, and the total combined for both of them is $100,000. So, and these are for services for the Mental Health Center.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. R is an agreement with Purdue University Global to establish a clinical externship and practicum program for students. The term of the con, the term shall be for one year.
I would move approval.
I'll second it. I have a question. Do we know what site these students will be and who will be overseeing them?
Yeah.
This is for the Crisis Center.
Oh, okay.
Excellent. And so I'm assuming Scott will pick someone to oversee them. But I don't know the specifics. I just reviewed the contract, so that's why I know it's for Scott.
Very good. Thanks. Okay.
And this is a renewal?
No, I haven't even looked at the books now.
This is new. Okay, all right. So do we have a motion?
Yeah. I was going a different direction, but I still make the motion for the Crisis Center.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please call the roll then.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number five. This is an update on COVID-19 and Lancaster County response.
Anyone have anything regarding the COVID-19 update?
The only, I tossed this out for discussion, I don't know, maybe two weeks ago about combining our Tuesday and Thursday meetings to one day to cut down on exposure and let people in. And we said, well, we could talk about it when we were in the red, and we're now in the red. And I don't know if it would truly be a benefit. As Dave mentioned, we would just be here longer. It would mean less people in the building, so I'm just tossing it out there for discussion.
I would just like to throw out that as of right now, I, this Thursday's agenda has almost nothing on it other than something on my report. And I had talked to Cory in the clerk's office about some issues about maybe having payroll approvals, and she said she would be able to work through those on her end. So we really don't have much on the Thursday agenda as of right now, as far as this week. We certainly can look into just having a staff meeting after the Tuesday meeting, if that might be a benefit.
We could certainly try next Tuesday as an experiment. I mean, we're within our rights, I assume, Dave, to try it on a Tuesday and see what our feelings are about it. Seems like an option to consider, to try.
Does the clerk's office have any thoughts?
If you make this change, if you go back, we need a little bit of notice so we can publish for Thursday. So I mean, there is open media saying we have to be canceled.
Right, right.
General Star's four deadline is like 3:00, 4:00, 5:00, 6:00. I give them something a day, it doesn't get posted till Friday. It's not like immediate post.
Okay. And we need to post if we're canceling.
Well, going forward after the 14th, yes, because I've already sent all those notices for the next year.
Okay, so I do have a question regarding some of the Tuesday meetings that we do have. For example, I think that we do have, sometimes it's rotating, but we do have the RTSD, and then we also have the Public Building Commission. And how, how will that work? Will that just, will the meeting follow this one?
Generally, we would do it as we have done in the past with those emergency meetings. We've called an emergency staff meeting, so we would have.
Okay, just immediately follow?
Immediately follow, yeah.
And if we have a really long staff meeting?
Right. Well, I also would say this might be something that we look at either on a case-by-case basis, or we say we're going to do this through the holidays, just to have some consistency. One of the items that I was going to bring forward at the staff meeting was to discuss the adjournment schedule. So I mean, we're pretty close to that. I mean, when you start looking down, down the road, we only have so many meetings left anyways. So that might be something that we, we talk about, about that adjournment schedule and how, how many of these meetings, maybe we just say we're going to do the rest, through the rest of the year, and then we'll start over and.
Would be, would it be something that we could start at 8 o'clock or 8:30 instead of 9? That would give an additional half hour or hour. And looking at, at, at least on my calendar, the RTSD meeting coming up is September, we do not have, or is coming up is on a Monday in December. It varies. Right. And then DEC does not meet again until after the 1st of the year. I don't know about Public Building Commission, where that is. And then also our joint meeting that's coming up.
That's next Monday.
That's next Monday. So we're clear, we're clear on those. Okay, we're clear through. I just wanted to bring that up for discussion. Sure.
How about we plan on doing this next, we cancel this Thursdays, we plan on putting whatever we would have had on Thursday on Tuesday, and then at Tuesday, we can talk about going forward, what that looks like. And I can have some conversations with the clerk's office about what it would do if we changed the timing of the start for this meeting. So I can, I can bring that forward.
And again, I, I was just thinking for a couple of weeks until the number, again, it's kind of like when we went to Zoom, you know, just providing leadership before encouraging people to stay home during this crisis period and limit exposure, but still have an option to get our work done.
The year seems like a pretty good mark at this point.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I think it'd be something that we should try.
I'll bring forward some more specifics at the next staff meeting, which will be next Tuesday. We'll plan on not having staff meeting this Thursday, which again, we're not moving anything. I have nothing on the agenda. There was no one with a timed item. So that'll be the plan. Thanks.
The 19th. I think Moni is saying she would need a decision on the 19th before the 17th.
That makes sense. It's pretty tight.
Well, I mean, we could just say we're canceling the Thursday staff meetings for the month of November, and then try and figure out what we want to do in December. Does that seem fair? Because Thanksgiving's the next week, so.
You say we already know we have a Thursday cancellation in two weeks.
So we can just do both of those on Tuesday.
Yeah, let's just do both of those, and then we'll, hopefully by then we'll be out of red, and we can go back to normal operations.
I have no problem with any of that, yeah. Does that work for everybody else? I'm seeing head nods, so. Anything on COVID?
Uh, yeah. So speaking of red, our Waverly District is currently in somewhat of a COVID crisis. We have three employees who have either tested negative or are not currently being quarantined. And so I just ask for your patience and the public's patience when we're currently dealing with road issues. I said the only thing I would really ask for this week was not to get the original five inches of snow that were forecast for today and have to run a major snow operation in a situation like this. But it continues, the situation at county engineering, mostly due to personal lifestyle issues, continues to be very challenging.
Pam, I know you don't have, like, on calls, but are, are there staffing agencies that have CDLs available? I mean, I know that our equipment is highly specialized, but are there ways that we could utilize maybe some of those support services in a, in a crisis situation?
Uh, we do actually, it's not really an on-call, but it is a snow removal contract where we do have several contracts in place to do it. The thing that becomes interesting is your standard motor grader operator who does general construction sites, doesn't necessarily have experience with our type of gravel roads. And so when we tried it a couple of years ago, we, we really lost a lot of road materials. So I mean, it would take a little while to get up and implement. I, I think we're out of the woods with the current weather situation, and hopefully we'll have the money back towards the end of next week or the week after. But it remains a concern of mine as we go forward now that we have had our sprague district with major COVID and, and quarantine, as well as the Waverly District right now. And so I don't know whether to be happy that maybe we'll have all had it by the time that we get the major snow, or sad that we seem not to be learning the lessons from previous cases as we move forward, so.
Anything else regarding COVID? Any changes to operations we need to make? I think the board sends their best wishes to the mayor's family, the governor's family, all of the many, 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 all of the many families that we have of employees and staff and just members of our community who are currently quarantined or dealing with it. It's not fun. I speak from experience. So. Okay. Let's move down to public comment.
Next is number six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on the agenda, but you saw it this time.
Any, yeah.
Your chair, if I could just make a comment. The letter that you drafted to go to the planning department, it will be attached to the minutes. It's not attached to the agenda right now, but it will be available for the public to review the suggestions outlined when the minutes are posted in about 48 hours?
Perfect. And if anyone, I mean, I, I have like a rough draft of my suggestions that I would like to see. I'm perfectly happy to share those with anybody too. Not trying to keep those secret. So, okay, public comment. Are there any members of the public here wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners' staff meeting scheduled for Thursday, November 12, 2020, has been postponed until after next Tuesday's regular meeting. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next early meeting on Tuesday, November 17, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112, the County City Building, with the Board of Equalization following. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a Lancaster 101 meeting on Tuesday, November 17, 2020, at 3:30 p.m. at 1335 H Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. And this is at the NACO conference room. County Commissioners can reach at 402-441-7447, or commission@lancaster.ned.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners' meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the pre-broadcast schedule, visit lincoln.ned.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson? Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Very good. We are adjourned. We'll now come together as the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Russell Open Meetings Act is located on, well, at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.inny.gov. Agenda item one are minutes. Approve of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, October twentieth, two thousand twenty.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes. This is for Timber Ridge Homes.
Good morning. Scott Gaines, Deputy Assessor, Register of Deeds. This is a clericlear correction that was made to correct an error we made. It's a basement we put under a new construction home. That home is actually built on a slab. We miskeyed it in the system, so this is to correct that, to reflect that there is no basement under this property.
I would move approval of this change.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. We have two public hearings this morning. The first public hearing is for motor vehicle tax exemption applications. This includes Nebraska Cry for Improvement Association, School Sisters of Christ the King, St. Paul United Methodist Church, Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital, Lincoln Cats Youth Group, Centerpoint Inc., YMCA of Lincoln, People's Society Mission, and Hope Spoke.
Is there anyone here to testify for the public hearing on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Being known, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing, move on to the next one.
The next public hearing is notice of proposed change in exemption status. This includes Capitol Lodge number eleven of INT, Crestwood Christian Church, Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital, Inc.
These are three properties that had previously been granted permissive exemptions. They've subsequently sold to other entities, so this is the automatic notice of rejection to the applicants. We also notify the purchaser of the removal of the exemption. And in one case, from church to church, Connie Alshreed in our office spent over an hour working with that purchaser to make sure that they knew that they had to get an application in by November fifteenth for us to consider that. So it transfers from church to church and will remain exempt upon approval of the board. So that application will be forthcoming shortly.
Okay. Any members of the public here wishing to speak on the proposed changes in exemption status? Being known, we'll close that public hearing and move on to the action items.
Number five A is motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is proposed change in exemption status for Capitol Lodge number eleven of INT.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five C is proposed change in exemption status for Crestwood Christian Church.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest? Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five D is proposed change in exemption status for Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital, Inc.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county board of equalization business, not on the agenda, may do so at this time.
Any, any members of the public wishing to speak on county board of equalization items? Seeing none, we'll move to item number seven.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We are adjourned.